Welcome to Gov 360, your full circle view on local government. Episode four of Gov 360 is going to be a little bit different than the previous three episodes. First of all, this is our very first in-studio guest, so that's exciting. But secondly, the first three episodes focused on staff, right? We focused on local government professionals. This fourth episode is going to take a little bit of a different approach. Our guest today, Jeremy Smith, is a city council member in the city of Canyon Lake, which is in Riverside County, California. And we're going to talk a lot about the council manager form of government, how city councils and city managers and staff interact, what that interaction should look like. The council manager form of government is the most popular form of government in the United States. Here in California, over 90% of the state's 483 cities implement the council manager form of government. It's not perfect, but I do believe it's the best system out there when implemented correctly. And there's the rub. It is not always implemented as intended, and things can get messy when it's not. So I think it's important as a profession that we talk about that council manager form of government, and that we understand what best practices are so we can implement them in our community. I also think it's going to be very interesting to hear from an elected official, what that experience is like, and what that relationship looks like from that perspective. With us today is Jeremy Smith, council member from the city of Canyon Lake. Jeremy has also been a staffer. Jeremy has also been a campaign consultant on city council, county supervisor, state legislative races, congressional races. So he comes to this with a unique perspective that I think you will find interesting. Jeremy, welcome to Gov 360.
Thank you. Thank you for having me. I'm excited to be here.
Yeah, you are our first in. Now, I use the word studio loosely here. This is, this is the home office that I have.
It actually is, I would still call the studio. I think it's put together very well.
My wife calls it her office.
Yep.
Yeah, I call it my studio. When we have people visiting, it's the guest bedroom.
You would never know, though. You would never know.
Yeah, no, you know, so when I was managing the city of Ucaipa, we started Ucaipa 360, which became very popular and actually won an award from the statewide Public Information Officers Association as best government podcast for 2025. And so we were honored, but when I left Ucaipa, I really missed having a studio.
Yeah.
So we're a little makeshift here, but it does the trick.
I love it. Absolutely.
So Jeremy, you've been an elected official now for about six and a half years.
Yep.
And for two of those years, you were mayor.
That's right.
Tell me, just right off the bat, what made you want to run for city council?
You know, it's, I never did. So that's what's so strange about why now I look at what I've done the last six and a half years, because I was always the guys behind the scene, you know? I would always help to try to get good people elected to local office, along with some, you know, state legislative races that we worked on. And I never put myself in the shoes of wanting to be that guy, quote unquote. And it was a good friend of mine that said, hey, man, you should run. And I go, why? He goes, well, Canyon Lake is a quote unquote "safe city," good opportunity. At the time, the council was substantially older than our median age for the community, which is why a lot of my neighbors and community members came forward and said, no, we need some young blood, was the youngest elected in the community. And kind of just the perfect storm occurred, you know? And that's what really pushed us to decide, and it was a total family decision. My wife and I, we sat down and we said, all right, public office, you know, I've been doing this now for, at the time, been in politics about eight to 10 years, working for elected officials and, you know, doing a lot of campaigns. And my wife knew exactly what we were going to get signed up for. My dad was the former mayor of Hemet, served on Calamasa City Council. So the timing was very interesting, because when we decided to pull papers in Canyon Lake, my dad was pulling papers in Calamasa, Riverside County. And so we were on the ballot together, father, son. And I'll never forget that evening, because we both were successful in our endeavors. And now he was getting sworn in to the Calamasa City Council, while I was getting sworn into Canyon Lake. So for a father-son duo, that was, that was awesome.
How neat, how neat. So it, you know, it's a family affair, public service.
Yeah, you know, we're sick and twisted in that way, I guess.
I do question your judgment. Yeah. So, so how old were you when your, when your dad was first elected in Hemet?
So I was a senior in high school, actually. So, no, I'm sorry, two years into college, that's right. So I was 20 years old, and he was running in 2010. So wow, it's already been 15 years. And that was, to be honest with you, Chris, that was the first, you know, piece of politics that I got. My dad was on the planning commission before running for city council. And I was on the speech and debate for my university that I was attending. And so I had some policy in my head, but working on my dad's campaign in 2010, when he was running for city council the first time, that's where I really got the bug. And I was like, okay, this is interesting.
So did you walk precincts? You did the whole thing?
Oh, the whole thing.
Signs?
Everything. And, you know, and I didn't know any of this stuff, right? So I didn't know what it really took to get elected. And I learned everything from that campaign. I mean, door knocking with my sister and my dad, and my mom even was coming out. I'll never forget knocking doors in Seven Hills, a little community in Hemet, and talking to seniors about some of the issues that are occurring in Hemet, and having to learn on the fly.
Yeah.
Wow, didn't even know public safety, paramedics, all these things that were occurring were an issue. And it really, you know, for me, it was an exciting time, because I was also doing policy debates in college, too. So going around the country and debating different universities on some of the policy issues, and then being able to come back home on the weekends and be able to campaign with my dad.
Now, local politics can be brutal.
Very much so.
At times. And I know that the city of Hemet, at the time your dad was on the council, was going through kind of a tumultuous time.
Very much so.
In its history. So things must have been politically challenging. And you were, you had a front row seat to watch your dad go through that. It's interesting to me that that didn't turn you off to local government service.
I got, we prayed a lot before we decided to run, because it was pretty, it was substantial for my family. I mean, my dad was, you know, we called a three-two split when you're on council, right? Are you on the three against or four? So he was, he had three, a majority on that council, and they were trying to shape politics in Hemet at the time, working with public safety. And it was difficult during the reelection campaign, because they went after him. And in return, they went after my mother. They went after, you know, our family.
Really?
There was points where they would, my mom and dad were at breakfast at a local restaurant in Hemet and would get cussed at. And, you know, my mother, bless her heart, you know, I don't even think she said a curse word during birth. I mean, that's how innocent my mom is, right? So for my dad to sit there with, with her at a breakfast and see strangers just cuss him out, total like, really? This is what we signed up for? This is not what public service, you know? So we have that in the back of our minds. And, and, you know, the problem is, is when, when you start doing things locally and making a difference, you become, you know, you want to be that servant, right? So even though my dad had a very interesting experience, and I was right there with him the whole time, he was so good at public policy that, you know, past all the, the sum of the division that took place, you know, he still wanted to push forward, and that inspired me. You know, that made me say, you know what? Because it was so tainted back then, I think we can still turn this thing around and have a good experience. And we have. It's been incredible the last six and a half years, being able to serve both of our communities.
That's amazing.
Yeah.
So you get elected, and this is 2018.
Yep.
Yep. And first of all, before you got elected, let's talk about that campaign process just briefly, because you were a young guy.
Yep.
Youngest in your community seeking office. At that time, it was a city council that was comprised of, you know, older members of the community.
Right.
And here's this young guy running for city council, and you killed it.
Yeah.
I mean, you absolutely killed it. What made the difference in that campaign? I mean, were, did you come in and you just, you knew the game? You knew how it was played? You knew how to campaign in a way that, that up until that point, no one in that city had done before?
A little bit of that. You know, I made a decision early on, too, since at that time, I was, I was right at 10 years in to being a political consultant. And I had to make a tough decision that I was going to have nothing to do with the race. I was going to let my business partner make the decisions for me when it comes to the consulting element. And what really did it for me, Chris, was my wife. We sat down and we said, look, if we're going to do this, we're going to go full court press. And I had this meeting, I was meeting with, you know, there's an HOA board in my community, and it's a very strong HOA board. And I was meeting with a few of, you know, the council, trying to get endorsements, meeting with, you know, people running for water board, meeting with some of the HOA board members. And currently, my colleague right now, council member Welty, I'll never forget this, and he knows, we sat down at the country club, and he said, look, no one knows who you are, Jeremy. You're brand new to the community, but that's okay. You're going to run this time, get some name ID, you're going to lose.
Yeah.
But then, once you get one race under your belt, people will start knowing you, and you get to talk about the issues. Well, I took that and put it on a sticky note. And I was very excited about the meeting, because I came home and my wife said, all right, how'd it go? And I said, well, he said, I don't have a shot at all. And we wrote it down on a sticky note, and I stuck it on the fridge. And at that moment, my wife and I said, all right, let's do this thing. And this is, this is what really did it. I would get home from work at, and this is the summer, right? Because we're looking at August, right, when we get going. I would get home from work at 4:35 o'clock every day. My wife would be sitting at the front yard waiting for me with a stroller, with 10-yard signs strapped to the back of the stroller and our literature, and she would not let me stop Monday through Saturday unless we got out 10 signs. And I would have days where terrible days at work, right? We've all done it, put in, you know, start, start the day at 4:35 AM, you know, work all day, get home. And I'm like, honey, I'm burnt out. Nope, nope, she would just force me to push. And then I would have good days. I would have days where we would go door knocking at 5:30, have all the signs out by 6:30, and I'd be like, yes, we got to go home early. Nope, reload. So we would walk from five to eight, no matter what, five to 7:30, no matter what. We ended up knocking on roughly 3,200 doors. And the staggering part was, is, you know, because if you know Canyon Lake, it's a gated city. So when you drive in, you can see these signs everywhere. So we knew the play. And we ended up putting out over 500-yard signs in people's lawns. And that was tough to do, because I was a year and a half into the community. No one knew who I was at all. So I was meeting people at the door, discussing the issues. But I gave it all to my, to my wife. I mean, absolutely incredible, pushing the stroller with our little dog, and everyone still talks about that to this day, you know?
So I got to say, I have tremendous amount of respect for local elected officials. You know, for the most part, unless you're in a much larger city, you know, you're not really getting compensated, you know, for your time.
Right.
A little stipend, but not, you know? And, you know, unlike staff, who, this is what we do full-time for a living. As council members, you have your regular lives, you have your full-time job, and you do that job. And then, you know, after that, you devote tremendous amount of time to the community, to serving on the city council. Not just time, but the public beatings that you take.
Right.
It amazes me that good people are still willing to step up and subject themselves to that in today's environment. I just have so much, so much respect for it.
It's funny, you said something interesting, that I always have a philosophy that I think you need to have a full-time job in order to serve at the local level. Because when you have that relationship between council and staff, I see so many of my colleagues try to become experts in the staff's field. It's not our job. Our job is to implement policy.
Yeah.
And so when I see retirees, and this is not for everyone, so don't get offended if you're out there listening to this, but some of them, this is all they have. And so it takes over what their responsibility is as an elected to the community. And they try to, you know, go over the CM, right? The city manager, or over their building official, or over their finance director. When this is what this person does day in and day out, they're an expert in their field, or at least they should be. And as council folks, we need to be careful, because that's not our job. That's not our job.
Now, that's interesting, and that leads into something that I wanted to talk with you about. When you first got elected, that was in, in 2018, in November, you take office, you're sworn in in December. You come in, and you come in pretty hot and heavy.
Yeah.
Right? You come in wanting to change the world, you got ideas, you're going to implement them, you're going to get things done, you're going to make change, right? And then what so often happens is you hit a brick wall, right? Right out the gate, right? You come in charging, and then, wait a minute. In order to get something done, I need at least two other votes of my five-member city council, right? And wait a minute, I got to deal with staff.
Right.
And wait a minute, there's all these things that, that, you know, that I wasn't aware of when I ran and made campaign promises and talked about things, right? Talk about that a little bit, because I think that's a very common experience. And people who run for office, they tend to run on platforms.
Right.
Things they want to get done. And they get in, and they're, they're ready to go and get those things done. And then, then a little bit of reality hits. Well, what was that like for you?
Yeah, you know, my, my story is so unique, because I was able, you know, I ran with a gal. She's on my council now, her name's Councilwoman Casey Castillo. And she's our mayor pro temp currently. And we, we, we supported each other, but we really didn't endorse each other. We were just running, right? And we both get sworn in, and she is a background attorney. So she's got a unique approach to it, and me being a business owner. And we found problems right away. So the good news for us, and this normally doesn't happen in most cities, we had the support of the council going in, because they wanted the young blood, the energy, you know, go open it up. So we were able to open up, they put us, you know, this is rare, Chris, because this doesn't happen, but the, the council that was there, the majority, they put us on finance and planning on our day one. So now we're brand new. Her and I get to sit down and look at all the financials to the cities and really see what's going on. And we found huge issues. We found bills that weren't being paid. We had legal bills that were overcharged that should have been corrected. So we had the opportunity to advocate to our colleagues that there needs to be change immediately. And we did that. Within 60 days, we had a new city attorney, we had a new city manager.
I remember that a little bit.
Yeah.
Full disclosure, for those watching and listening, you came in 2018, early 2019, you decided to make some changes. March 1st, 2019, I became the city manager in Canyon Lake.
Yep.
Which is how you and I really got to know each other. So, you know, for, for those listening, watching, I want everyone to know that you and I worked together in that capacity for four years.
Yep.
It was, it was a great four years.
It was a great four years. And I was very grateful to have the colleagues I did to make the change that we saw being the outsiders looking in. And, and, and I suggest, you know, council members that are listening out there, or even staff members, I was very grateful, because my colleagues were not, no, no, it's been fine the last year and a half. They didn't fight us. They, we brought legitimate reason on why we needed to make a change, and they went with it. It was a 5-0 decision. I mean, that's rare, right? To have brand-new council members come in who have not done government for five, six, seven, eight years, like some of my colleagues. And they, they looked us for advice and for help, and to make change like that. I mean, what, 60, 90 days? That's, that's fast, right? But we had some pretty, you know, good reasons on why we were doing what we were doing. And it made all the difference. But, you know, Councilwoman Castillo and myself, we were motivated. And that's why it goes back to my philosophy, is I really believe you need to either have an incredible hobby or a full-time job, because when we go into these meetings, we only have 30 minutes.
Right.
We only have an hour. We don't have time to sit there and, you know, make a game of it, right? And so when we made decisions, it was thought out, it was course corrected, it had evidence to back it up. And so we really wanted a clean city hall, and we were, we were on strike to do so.
Now, that's fantastic. Let's dig in here a little bit on what that relationship between an elected official and a city manager and the rest of the city staff should look like.
Yes.
Okay, so you come in, you notice some, some issues in the operations of city hall. You wanted to make a change. The council's job and a council manager form of government is to set policy.
Right.
Right? The council also hires the city manager, the council hires directly the city attorney. And in most cities, that's it. Now, now, some cities, particularly older cities, they've been around a long time. The practice was, there are other positions that are directly, you know, appointed by the city council or elected, right?
Right.
Like, like city clerk, city treasurer. But, but the modern best practice is that the city manager and city attorney are appointed directly by the city council and answer to the city council. And then the city manager hires and manages the rest of the staff.
Right.
Right? So the council's job is policy. The council operates up here, you're setting policy. There's a line. The city manager runs the day-to-day organization of the city, implements the policy set by the city council. And neither of the twain shall, shall meet, right?
Right.
You know, the manager and staff are not supposed to dictate to the council what the policy is going to be. The council's not supposed to micromanage and dictate the day-to-day operations, you know, or staffing issues, et cetera.
Right.
Right? And, and therein lies a tricky issue.
Very much so.
Where a lot of cities get into trouble. I have seen many, many cities, particularly cities where you have, members on the city council have been there a long time, where there's a lot of blurring of that line, right? Where members of the city council want to have a say on who's in certain staff positions. You know, maybe it's an assistant city manager position, maybe it's a director level, a department head position. And they exert influence on the city manager to try to make, make those changes. There are cities, you know, here in an empire that I've witnessed, where you have one or two council members who are in city hall every day and have, have a lot of input on just the day-to-day goings-on of the, the operations of the organization, right? I didn't witness that during my time in Canyon Lake. I feel, I feel like, you know, the city council really respected that line and the appropriate, appropriate roles. What has your experience been with that?
You know, that is such a key component of what I believe a responsibility is as a council member. And sometimes it's difficult, right? Because you start to build relationships with staff, right? Your city clerk, for instance. We have an incredible city clerk, and, you know, that's a relationship that, you know, you start scheduling things with, right? Or paperwork's due, or prepping for a meeting. And it's difficult for some council members not to realize they don't work for you. They still work directly for the city manager, and not to get in the middle of that. And I even learned this from, from you, Chris. You know, you might have your staff working on something that I know nothing about, that is going to take 15, 20 hours, that has to get done, because we have a grant application due. And it's due this Thursday, and I come into city hall, all right, but I got this, 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 and I need help, and da, 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 da. No, man, settle down. I'll take care of it. We got, we got to prioritize. So it's really important as the elected to make sure that you look at that model, right? As you look at that org chart, if you must, and you see, you know, where responsibility is given and allocated. But more importantly, our job is of two. And that is, you know, we have two people that work for the council, and that's it. The city manager and the city attorney, that's it. So for a council member to start going to a building and finance director, and, and we see this all the time, we see this all the time. A neighbor or a friend calls a council member, my permit wasn't approved.
Yes.
I know I did it right. I need you. And the proper thing for that council member to do is pick up the phone and call the city manager, not to call, you know, the building official, right? Or the director of that department and say, hey, you need to, no, absolutely not. You do not need to do that. You need to talk to your city manager, let him know the issue that's occurring. And then that's where it starts to begin, right? And I've always tried to tell my colleagues that ask me, how do you handle constituent issues like that? The first thing that comes out of their mouth, let me talk to my city manager.
Yep.
That's it.
Yep.
And, and that's how you handle it. And it takes some, for some, it takes longer to learn that than not. But I would encourage any city manager that is either starting or has been doing this a while, especially as they have new council members coming in, got to make that clear. Got to make that very clear. And use the example that you have staff, you know, working on something else. I think that was something that you did very well. Would you lay it out and say, look at all this that we're currently working on? And I know this is really important to you, but let's slide it in here. This is how we get it done.
Yeah.
And it's the city manager's job to run the city, right? And then to implement what those council members want.
Yeah, no, I think it's important, because the city manager has to balance the workload.
Right.
That's, so that's important. But also, imagine as a staff member, maybe you're a lower-level staff member, and let's, let's say the planning department, right? And you're processing an application. And a member of the city council comes in and says, hey, this is, this application, this applicant is a friend of mine.
Right.
This needs to be top priority, move this to the top of the list, make sure you get this pushed through, right? But maybe that's contrary to the direction that was given to that employee by the planning director, or the community development director, or the city manager, right? What an awful position for a staff member to be put in.
Yep.
Who do they, you know, they don't want to defy a council member.
And now they're scared, right? And now the experience for them is, you know, that council member doesn't know all the red flags that occurred before they got to that point, right? Or whatever the story might be. And, and I encourage my colleagues out there who are listening to really understand that the positions that we're in should not be used to tell staff what to do. Absolutely not. I know we want to be heroes, and we want to hit home runs. We call them dingers in my community. We want to hit dingers for our citizens. But there's an order there in line that has to work. And that's when, I think if you can appreciate and respect the way that cities are ran with your org chart going through your city manager, that's when your CM will start hitting home runs for you, too. And there's not going to be this, you know, butting heads that occur when a council member is trying to run the city when that's not their job.
You know, I'm a big believer in goal-setting.
Right.
Right? And one of the things that, that we implemented when I first got there was, you know, an annual goal-setting session, right? Where we, where the council sets, you know, it could be 10 goals, 15 goals, five goals, whatever it is. These are the main things we want to accomplish this year, right? And I think that's so important, because in all cities, we're dealing with limited resources.
Right.
Whether it's money, whether it's staff, you know, manpower, right? The amount of time in a day, right? These are limited resources. And so if, if every day, there's another new thing that becomes the top priority, you're never going to get anything done, right? And also, by setting goals, then you have an objective matrix, measurable things to look at your city manager's performance, right? And the staff's performance, and say, you know, how do we evaluate the city manager? How do we evaluate that job performance? Well, in my mind, the most important way is, is the city manager being effective at implementing the policies that we set?
Right.
Right? Because that's the main job, right?
That's it.
That, and so, you know, you set goals, did those goals get accomplished or not? Pretty easy.
Well, and everyone's on the same page, right?
Yes.
I think that was, that was so, you know, important when we implemented that in my city, thanks to your leadership. Because now I'm looking across my colleagues, and I'm saying, wait a minute, you signed off on this.
Yeah.
This, this was a priority for you three months ago, when we came together with the list of five, three, whatever it might be. And, and that's that unity that you need, because it gets pretty dicey, as you know, Chris, when you're dealing with some of your colleagues, and you want to use resources for a certain project, and you don't, there has to be give and take. And if you start the year off with, hey, what's our top five things that we want to get done? Let's move together on this, and we're all in agreement. And it doesn't matter if it takes three hours, four hours, five hours, if you have to do an off-site work session to get it done, get it done. So that way you have something to look back on throughout the entire year when council members are fighting with each other and wanting to do other stuff.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, so we've, we've talked about that, that dynamic between a council member and a city manager and city staff within the city. But let's make it a little bit more complicated now.
Yeah.
Okay? Because then, then we deal with regional boards.
Right.
Right? And you've served on a number of these.
Yes.
You know, in Riverside Counties, there, there's a Riverside Transit Authority. Is it authority or agency?
Agency.
Agency.
So RTA.
RTA, right.
Yep.
And then RCTC, which is the Transportation Authority, right?
Absolutely.
And, and, and others, the Western Riverside Council of Governments, you know, et cetera, right? And so now you're, you're sitting on a board of many elected officials throughout the county. You know, you're representing your city on, on that board. But yet there's also a staff component to that as well. There, there is a staff that are, you know, with that entity, with that organization. But then, you know, your city staff come into play too, and your city manager comes into play too. That's got to be kind of a complicated dynamic.
Oh, it is, you know, and especially because here you are, you just got elected. Or maybe, you know, you've been on council a while and you got put on, appointed on a new board. And you figured out your four other colleagues at home, but now you're sitting there with 18 commissioners or 22 or 32 for, for some regional boards. And you're like, whoa, wait a minute. And you're fighting for projects that you want to be brought home, right? You want to talk about politics? That's where it really begins. You know, and that's why, you know, when, when we make decisions at the local level to send certain representatives to these regional boards, you got to make sure you're picking the right one. So they not only just advocating for your own city, but they're not embarrassing you as well on the regional side.
Right.
So, you know, it is complex and, and for me, it's important that, you know, you, you, you have that relationship on the regional with, with not just the colleagues, but staff too. I mean, these, these boards are big boards. There's a lot of money. There's a lot of things happening and these are very smart people. And I've learned early on, any room, any meeting I go to, there's two philosophies I have. Take a bite of humble pie, no matter where you're at. But more importantly, there's always something to learn. So when you get put on these boards and you're sitting there with a staff of 50, 60, 80 people and they're working on all these projects throughout the county, there's, there's got to be something you can grab from that that you can then take home to your city manager and say, hey, why don't we try this? Or hey, I just heard that Lake Elsinore is doing this. I think we can go after those grant dollars too. And that's good governancy. That, that in my opinion is how those regional boards really take a key, key play and helping besides the typical going after dollars for projects and trying to get things through. But that's the political side of it.
Okay. So you're talking directly to elected officials now. You're a brand new elected official. You're stepping in the office for the first time. And you're, and this person is now sitting down with Jeremy Smith and Jeremy's going to give this person some advice. What advice would you give that person?
Number one thing is, and I'll never forget this, I got a good colleague in the city of Wildomar named Joseph Maribito. And him and I both went to League of Cities training for a new council member and we had this conversation. Again, as a staff member myself, who's worked in politics, who's dealt with agendas, I have a different perspective than maybe someone like council member Maribito, who's, who's new, new to the circuit as well. And we had this conversation and it's very important as a new council member to not be an I got you council member. And I, and I use that very carefully because if you're on the council, especially if you don't have a majority, to be an I got you a council member, what that means is, is to keep your mouth shut before a city council meeting. And you have in the back of your head, an agenda item that you just want to nail staff on. Whether it's lack of report, lack of staffing, lack of funding, whatever it might be. I can promise you that it's not going to go well for you down the road. And I say that because do you really want a relationship with the team that is going to make you look good on that dais to represent your city to be on odds with, right? So Joseph and I had this conversation and we came up with, you know, he asked me, so how do you handle getting ready for a city council meeting? I go, well, I'm very blessed because my CM takes the time to meet with every council member before the meeting and just go nuts. Just nail me with it. And, and even before the agenda is posted, so if there's a controversial item like starting a police department, right? Or, you know, looking at making huge budget cuts, you know, cutting staff, big items that could be controversial to the community, you know, sit down with your city manager and he'll bring in or she'll bring in the right people for that department to really handle the question. So they're prepared going into the council. We have a tough enough job as it is to deal with the public, to deal with PRAs, to deal with constituent outreach efforts with all the events, with everything that's going on. We need a team and that team is the staff back at city hall. And if you start hurting those relationships, now you're just going to be put into a corner. And unfortunately, you're not going to be doing the job, at least what I believe, most successful. So the number one thing I would say to new council members out there is sit down with your staff and learn the process before you pass judgment. Now that's, that's what we did. That's what my colleague and I, Mayor Protem Castillo did. We sat down with at the time, the city manager, at the time, the city attorney. We took in information for 60, 70 days before we made the decision with our colleagues that we needed to move in a different direction. We didn't do it just because we were hot off the campaign trail. And because we wanted to start just firing everyone at city hall, we did it because we had, you know, evidence on why we needed to make a shift and we needed to make a move. So, you know, a good legislator, Chad Mays, you know him well.
Yes.
He said something really good to me. He said, you know, my first year in office as a state assemblyman, I'm going to keep my mouth shut. I'm going to learn. I'm going to learn where the bathroom's at. I'm going to learn how to do this job before I start pushing my own agenda or my constituency or my district's agenda. I need to learn on what's happening before I move forward.
Yeah, I think that's key, you know, even as a city manager, you know, when, when you started a new city, I think, I think so often people start a new job and they, they want to, they want to prove themselves right off the bat, right? But it's so important to take a minute and, and learn the organization, you know, learn the culture. But before you start shaking things up, you know, too soon, I think that's true.
And learn the items too, right? I mean, I mean, when we're up there on that dais and we have to make decisions on, on certain items. And I, and I hope I still have the same reputation, especially with those I work with. I'm going to know it inside and out. I'm going to be fully prepared because I'm going to vet it by the city attorney, the city manager, the department head who's in charge of that item. So that way I'm not asking embarrassing questions for myself. But also, so we have iron sharpening iron and it's the best item that we can bring forward from both the policymaker standpoint and the implementer, which is usually the city manager and the staff putting it forward.
You know, politics is a team sport. Governing is a team sport, right? Except for maybe dictatorships.
Yeah.
But that's not our form of government.
Exactly.
And so, you know, if you're on the city council and most cities in, in, in the, in the country, you're one of five, you know, some councils are larger, especially in larger cities, but you know, you, you can't get anything done on a five member council unless there are three votes.
You gotta count to three.
Right. And you're not at city hall every day as an elected official. And so, you know, really, if you want to move, move the needle, you gotta be working with staff too, right? The, the, the department has, the, the people at city hall that are doing the work, they're the ones that are going to prepare those items, do the research, right? And, and, and bring it forward. And I think that's so critical to remember that it's, it's, it's a team sport. No one is as successful in this business, either on the elected side or on the staff side on an island.
Exactly.
None of us are on an island.
Well, and you, you've seen it too, Chris, and, and this is where it gets, you know, talk about getting controversial, right? Because now, you know, put a dynamic out there of a three, two split, right? You have three positive, two negative or vice versa, right, on most items. And, and now you put your city manager in a very awkward situation too. I mean, especially if you have a four, one council and one council member is just off his or her rocker on an island, doing their own thing, and you have four others and the city manager is like, sorry. Like I got a majority of the council here who wants to implement this policy. And unfortunately I don't have the votes that you need, council member, to, to move this item forward. And that's why it truly is a game of addition. And I hate to say it like that, but it is, if, if you want to create and implement new policy in your local jurisdiction, municipality, wherever you're at, you need the support of your colleagues to do it. And that's where the give and take occurs. And we do this all the time at the regional level and at the local level. There's things that I want, like a fire department, a police department, which I'm very happy to report we're doing that. But I had to give other things to my colleagues to implement that, right? And that's fair. That's fair.
Yeah, no, it is. Okay. Let's ask a similar question, but from a, a different perspective now, a more staff perspective, right? So you're a council member. You, you've got some, some thing that's really important to you. Whether it's a, you know, coming to you from a constituent or something that's just personally important to you. You come into city hall, city manager's not there. Assistant city manager's not there. So he said, man, I'm, I'm just going to go take care of this. You go over to the planning counter, you talk to the, the planner who's there and you say, I need this done. I need this done now. I need you to work on this and get it done. The staff person has been directed that, you know, that kind of communication needs to go council member to city manager. And the city manager will then work with staff to accomplish it. Now that staff person's in an awkward spot, right? What, what would you like to hear as, as a council member from that staff person? How can that staff person let you know that, listen, I, I, I want to help you. But, but I, I'm dealing with, with, you know, direction here too. What is a tactful way that staff person could respond to you in a way that as the elected official, you'd understand and respect that response?
You know, that, that's a, that's a tough question because I, I, as you're asking it, I'm thinking of, you know, the, the 60, 70 council members that I get to serve with throughout the county and how every single one of them would react differently based upon the answer to that question. But I think that the answer needs to be absolutely council member. I'm going to run this by the city manager and inform him. As you know, he's not here today or he's not here. It has to be from the bottom to the top that the same message is going to go through the city manager. I've been in those situations too. I'm, I'm not going to be, you know, perfect here because I've had something on my mind. And I'm one of those guys that go to bed with zero emails, zero texts, right? So I work hard at making sure that if something comes to me, I get it done right away. So there's been times where I've had to go with our building official and say, hey, look, not asking you to do anything, but this might be coming your way. I'm going to let Aaron, I'm going to let Brian, I'm going to let Chris, I'm going to let the city manager know. But it's, it's, it's so that the conversation happens in case I get busy and something occurs. The question that you laid out is a very controversial one because now this council member is going to that department head and demanding something. And, and I think that department head or that analyst, whatever the position is, needs to say, thank you. I'll take note of it. Absolutely. And, and, and take the information and then provide it to whoever's in charge. That, that's what has to happen. And I would say as a staff member, don't put false ideas in our heads as elected because, you know, what, what you don't understand when you're an elected official is you probably have 30 things coming at you at any given time. So if I leave that desk or if I leave that counter, giving that, that message and your response to me in building, for instance, is, oh, absolutely. I think it's done.
Right.
I'm moving on to the next 29 things that I got to get done that day. And, and that's the difference, right? You, you can't put false ideas in, in the elected's head because we're constantly rapid, rapid moving forward. And I think even at that level for city managers out there, it needs to be a dynamic where everyone is on the same page that they're not trying to appease a council member because their boss is not there.
Right.
Right?
So I always tell the staff working under me that if, if a council member approaches you with a question about something, questions are fair game.
Yep.
If they need information, if they're just being polite and they want to say hello, that kind of communication is, is healthy and there's nothing wrong with that, right? Where the line is, is giving direction.
Direction.
Right. Because, because now you're entering into an area where, you know, okay, now we've got to balance workload. They could be dealing with conflicting direction on something, right? So that's why direction to staff needs to flow through the city manager. So I, I ask my staff, first of all, you know, be, be polite, be, be professional. If a council member is, is giving you direction, let them know, well, thank you, sir, ma'am. You know, I, I would love to jump on this. Just, it's got to go through the city manager. I'll be happy to, to take this up to the city manager or maybe the council member will then go to the city manager. That's important. And this is a little controversial. I ask all of my staff to report to me any interactions they have with council members, right? Now, I say any, but you know, if council member's walking down the hall and says, good morning, you don't have to report that.
Right.
Right. But anything of substance. Anytime a, a council member approaches a staff member and asks questions on a topic, right? Or tries to give direction. Then as a city manager, I have to know about that. I can't do my job if I don't know what's, what's important to a council member, what a council member's thinking about and trying to get accomplished, right? And, and it's also as a city manager, my job to be a buffer between the elected, the elected officials and the rest of the staff, right? That, that, that's my job so that the staff are protected and they're not put in that uncomfortable, no win position.
You know, you nailed it. We got to be very respectful in the relationship. And I, and I've seen it now over the years that when you have a great relationship with your city manager, city attorney, and you're very transparent with them on what you're trying to do, chances are 80, 90% of the time, you're going to get those things done than not.
Yep. Absolutely.
It's good governance.
Well, and, and city managers, most, most city, most successful city managers want to please their council members.
Right.
Right? I mean, as a city manager, you work for the city council. And in this council manager form of government, understanding that is so critical. I think one of the mistakes that some managers make is that they forget who they work for.
Right.
Right. City manager does not work for the community, you know? Any manager who's done this for any amount of time, you know, at one point or another has had a member of the community say, you know, you work for me, right? I pay your salary.
Right.
Right. No, the, the city council is elected by and represents the community.
Right.
The public. The city manager is hired by and works for the city council, right? And then all the rest of the staff work for the city manager, right? And so when a council member says to me, well, you know, my staff, referring to all of the city staff. No, that's incorrect. I am your staff.
Right.
Right. They're my staff.
Well, and, and you know, Chris, this is important too. And this is for the new elected and this is for someone who's even been in office for 10 years. We, we have so much on our plate, we're doing other things.
Yes.
So why would you want to burn the relationship or not utilize the relationship properly on someone who's dedicated to that item and can provide, it's, it's, it's the internet at your disposal, right? It's, it's, hey, help me prepare for this item. And it's their job to know it inside and out and to question and to challenge. And this isn't for everywhere, you know, there's bad apples out there. There's city managers that need to go. There's city attorneys that need to go. But when you have a good team, you can be an incredible council member to your community because you're going to have a couple of team members there who are going to want to go hit some serious home runs for you. And, and you're, you're going to be prepared more than, than others. And I think that's important. That's really important to know that.
Yeah, no, absolutely. Okay. So you're evaluating your city manager as a council. What are the things that as a council member make you say, I got the best city manager around? Like this guy is knocking it out of the park. What are the things that you're looking for when you're evaluating your city manager?
You know, it's funny because everyone has their different needs and wants, right? I'm a policy geek. So, you know, for me, and having worked with you, Chris, you know this about me. I love to throw ideas on a whiteboard with my city manager, not just myself, right? It has to be ideas and you and I would have this conversation all the time. Hey, Chris, what do you think of this? You're an idiot, Jeremy. Not going to happen. Okay, okay. But it was fun, right? Right? It was fun.
For the record, I do not recommend that city managers call their council members idiots.
Never.
Just, just for the record.
Never. But it's important for, for a good city manager, in my opinion, to be able to love your job.
Yes.
To be excited about your job. Cause government is exciting. Local government is exciting. You, you get the opportunity to do things that people will see the change. Could be next week, could be a year, could be two years. And so, you know, when you look at evaluation for a city manager, it's got to be excitement, love your job and want to explore new ideas. I think what bothers me about government the most is when you put a box around your brain and you don't want to look outside that box. I think a city manager needs to go bye-bye when they're stagnant. That's, that's important to me. When you aren't bringing it every day because you're bored out of your mind or more importantly, your, your creative juices just aren't there anymore because you think you've done everything you can for the city. That's an important, important decision for me on if you're going to stay in the seat or not. I think, I think that's how you continue to, to shape good politics and more importantly, good policy in the city.
Developing that rapport with your city manager, that, that, that relationship between council member and city manager is, is so critical.
Right.
And I think for a lot of city managers, it's difficult to balance everything they have to do, right? They have responsibilities within the organization, managing the day to day, the organization. There's a lot that goes into that. At the same time, you're managing individuals and groups in the community, right? Everyone wants, wants your ear. Everyone wants a meeting. Everyone wants to talk about whatever project or whatever thing it is that's important to them, right? And so you're balancing that. And then you've got, you know, for most cities, five members of the city council. You have to manage individual relationships with every one of those council members. Then there's the group dynamic as, as, as a whole that you're, you're working through as well and the politics and, you know, it, it's a challenge. But I think, and, and being, being very open here, I think where, where I can do better is really focusing on those relationships, right? It becomes all too easy to get into the routine, the day to day routine and, and spend a lot of time in your office and working on just the, the day to day stuff with, within the organization. And that's important.
I think, I think the moment you let the relationship start to go is when change occurs, right? And, you know, just being, since we're being vulnerable, you know, the moment we see city managers not know their council inside and out is when their job posting is going to start to occur in the next five or six months. We see it all the time in the industry, right? It's how's your relationship with my CM? I don't know. What? What do you mean? How's your relationship? I talk to my CM every day.
Yeah.
Every day. And, and, and this is, this is twofold, right? For, for city managers out there, if you're not talking, and no, get me wrong, there's some council members that either don't have the availability or do not have, they either don't have the availability or they do not have the time to be in communication with their city manager. And I get that, right? But it's still the job of the city manager to want to work towards building that relationship to, like I said before, hit dingers for that council member. But that's what creates good policy, right? And, and you said it so clear, the city manager works for the council, right? The council works for the community.
Yes.
And that's why the policy that we should be implementing is what our constituency is telling us to do. That's the key. That's where our box is at. We need to do what we believe is right for our community.
Yes.
And, and that's the direction that we're giving, but you gotta have a relationship. You have to work hard for that. And, and I, and I understand the difficulty for a city manager because in the industry, we call the two, two, one. And for those of you that don't know, we have this thing called the Brown Act, right? And, and we can't meet three of us together. So a lot of city managers, when we're meeting with developers or, or other entities, we'll have to do a two, two, one where we have two council members and the city manager and maybe the developer, another two council will separate meeting and then a single, right? That's controversial in itself too, because you as the city manager deciding, wait a minute, Brian hates Tiffany. We cannot let them be together in this meeting. This item will not go through. They can't stand each other. I will never do a two, two, one with them, right? And you, as, as a city manager, a lot of people don't know this either, and I try to tell some of my newer colleagues this. The city manager is our gateway to each other. He is going to look at the council as a whole and make decisions if that item is going to pass or not. And I would strongly suggest city managers out there, you know, don't get it in the game of throwing up items to watch controversy things take place at that dais. If you know that item doesn't have a, a chance, right? Do not allow, or at least do the best you can with that colleague, that council member to say, look, this is going to create a huge issue. Let me, let me give you rational reason on why this is not going to work and, and, and talk them through it. And then if the council member is just going to do it no matter what, then that's on them. But at least you as the leader can say to the other council members, I tried. This is where we're at. This is what they want. I've done everything I could because I agree with you. Or maybe this is the right time for the city to move this item forward. But it all stems from relationships. That's what it comes down to.
It's a relationship business, a hundred percent. You know, another thing that's important that, that I, I try to You know, another thing that's important that, that I, I try to establish with members of the councils that I work for is this idea of no surprises, right?
Right.
Let's not surprise each other in, in a way that could be publicly embarrassing, right?
You're so right.
So, so we're, we're at a council meeting, it's my job to make sure that I've communicated with you and you know what items are coming up, particularly anything that might be controversial and that you're prepped for that ahead of time. As a council member, it's your job to have reviewed that information, become familiar with it ahead of time. And if there are questions, particularly questions that are going to require some background work on the part of staff to maybe go get some data or where, or whatever that, that information is, bring that up ahead of time before you get to the council meeting, right? Um, so that we're not in a council meeting playing gotcha, playing, right? That's, that's so important.
You nailed it. And, and I would, for those council members that are listening out there, hold your colleagues accountable to. I think it's a little unfair when you look at a dais and you see five members of the council and three of them have worked their tails off to understand an item inside and out. And then the one member that has done no work at all on the item starts trying to, I got you. And the questions are idiotic. And you're like, okay, it's clear as day that you had not had the opportunity to read the item because it's in the staff report. That's always my favorite line. If you go to page 835, literally section three, it's in the staff report. It's taken care of. And I think read the material, no matter what you do. I mean, now with technology, you can upload your agenda and have it read to you.
Mm-hmm.
So even if you don't have the time to sit there and read, you know, a 30, 40-page staff report, upload it on one of these AI softwares, put it in your headphones, go for a walk and have it been read to you so you know what's going on. And then sit down with your staff, your city manager and ask the tough questions that you want to. So that way, and there's a lot of role playing that occurs here. Let's be frank. If we want to be, you know, open-minded, there's a lot of opportunities where a CM has to say certain things publicly and the city council member has to say things publicly. So the audience, the members of the community know that yes, we did ask that tough question. Yes, we did come to, you know, uh, the city manager and the city attorney and we asked, why are we doing this? And that's okay, as long as both sides are prepared to have that conversation and have that policy debate. But doing a complete surprise out of left field, um, that's where you're going to get yourself in trouble, in my opinion, because you're going to lose respect from, no one wants to see negativity. We might think we want to get the popcorn and watch the fighting occur, but if you do that day in and day out, I guarantee you, and those of you that are listening, um, who are council members, who are seeing staff members leave left and right, I guarantee you it's because of what's happening at top.
Yeah.
When I see councils just completely fighting left and right and it's chaos and you're doing one, two o'clock morning meetings, you have public hearing items that last 10 hours because you have public comments, they have to reduce them from three minutes to one minute to 30 seconds because you have 50 people that want to speak on it because there hasn't been enough communication. I can assure you that there is problems happening at city hall and it could be just because of the council.
Yeah.
All the drama, the arguments, the fighting and, and, and that's where the issue lies is when, and when you're not looking at it that way, that you gotta get along with each other. We have a philosophy in my city. Um, we have robust conversation, closed session. We argue with each other. Um, we gently fight with each other, but man, we're using iron to sharpen iron. And so that way, when we open those doors to go out to the public, we look like a unity, like a team. Um, so that way we're not trying to, you know, fight with each other because that's, that's not good for anyone.
No, you're right. I'd like to encourage people to think a little differently about public meetings, specifically city council meetings or meetings of the county board of supervisors, right? These are business meetings of the elected body. The purpose of these meetings are to conduct the business of the entity.
Right.
Right? This is not meant to be theater, right? And I think it is difficult sometimes to remember that, that, that we're here at that meeting to conduct business and not to play to the audience.
Right.
And even the way that most council chambers are set up and arranged, um, it, it, give the wrong idea about the purpose of the meeting. Because if you think about the way most diocese are, are constructed, it's kind of that semi-circle that opens up facing out towards the audience, right? So it almost gives that impression that we are presenting this to the public. That's not what's, what's, what's supposed to be happening, right?
Right.
I think ideally diocese would be round, right? Because, because, because it, it's supposed to be a conversation of the elected body conducting the business of, of the elected, of the, of the organization.
Right.
Right? Of the municipal corporation. It is the board of directors of the municipal corporation, holding a business meeting and setting policy, right? Now, at the appropriate time, members of the public are invited to comment, right? And of course they're completely open, they're, they're available for members to come and observe and, and in today's modern world, watch on, on TV or YouTube or whatever it is, right? Uh, I believe that the public's business must be conducted in a transparent manner. But the city council meeting really shouldn't be about performing for an audience.
Right.
Right? And I think that's hard for a lot of elected officials to, to, to keep in mind. Um, there are so many other ways to communicate to the public. As an elected official or even as an organization, if we need to transmit information to the public, there's lots of ways we can do that completely outside of the form of a city council meeting.
Right.
Right? And so I think if there's a big controversial issue, it is incumbent upon the city to be communicating those issues far in advance of that ever coming to a city council meeting.
Well, Chris, let's talk fire.
Yeah.
You know, we did it together, you and I. Um, we made the decision, uh, the council made the decision to move forward with its own fire department, right? And, you know, that time was interesting because we were dealing with COVID. Um, but we took that same philosophy that you just described. We were so ahead of the PR side of it, getting all the information out that to the point where the, we used to call them the negative eight, the, the, the group of folks that were against the idea, we would sit with them regularly and have discussions and updates and turn it back and say, help us make this the best thing that we can for our community. We didn't do that from the dais.
Right.
We didn't play the theatric game from the dais of, hey, role-play this. Absolutely not. We had the hard conversations in town hall meetings and we were prepared before that item came forward or when we started moving things in that direction. Um, I think that's how you do it. And, and this is fresh on my mind because we just did this a month ago, um, with, with police too. But we did the same thing that, that we did, Chris. We, we put it out there on all the social media sites. We let the community just bash the idea, just bash it. And then myself, uh, my colleague, uh, Mayor Potem Castillo, the city manager and team, we developed not just the staff report, but the conversation from the dais that addressed all those questions to the point where we had a full room and we had 10, 15, who knows how many people that wanted to speak, but when we were done, only four people spoke on the item.
Wow.
Packed house, right?
Wow.
But it's because of that same philosophy that we did when you were our city manager, we put the information out there using technology and we let the community ask the hard questions to themselves, to us, and then we provided the answers to them.
Mm-hmm. Okay. So you're, you're city council member. You're looking for your next city manager. Now this is for people who are currently city managers looking for their next job. This is for aspiring city managers, people who want to be a city manager someday. As a council member, what are you looking for when you're evaluating whether or not to hire someone as your city?
I love this. And, and, and I've gone through, not gone through, we've had, under my term, four city managers, gone through the process with three of them as far as, as, as hiring. And I was on the committee of two of those to, to go through. So I know this topic very well. Um, the number one thing, and that, you know, for those of you that are city managers, you're going to laugh at this, but I have proof and point, know the budget. Know the budget before you walk into that interview.
Yeah.
Know what we're dealing with. Um, have an understanding that this council member, um, you know, wants you to know what's happening before you walk in there. Uh, the other thing that is so crucial, and in fact, um, you, you did a good job of this too, when we interviewed you, have solutions to some of the problems. Show that you're creative enough that in a time slot when the job is open, which is usually two to four weeks, give or take, that you found a couple ideas to help move the city forward. That's unique, right? That's creating solutions to the problem. You know, for instance, we all struggle with revenue for the most part, unless you're like Temecula Wine Country. And I just met with a colleague in Palm Desert, they're doing pretty well. They just got a sales tax measure, but we all struggle with funding issues, right? We all struggle with, um, being creative in government. So as, as a city manager or, you know, assistant CM or someone who's entering into that category of wanting to be a city manager of a city, be fully prepared to know that city as best as you can, inside and out. Do the extra homework to call stakeholders in that community, not so much directly the council member, but maybe some chamber of commerce folks that work for the community to have some understanding that will put you above the next guy or gal. So that way you know that when you walk into that interview, you're bringing some good, um, solutions to some of the problems. And I think that's what's going to separate a city manager from others, um, that creativeness and not stagnant. The other thing, and I'll end on, on, on this for as far as what a city manager look for, um, and some, some CMs are not creative as much as I would like in government, but show up wanting the job. You know, not that, uh, you know, this is the next step or all this, I'm stagnant, so now, show up as excited as I am to be able to hire a new city manager as you should be to wanting to start as a new city manager. I think that's very important, right? Because for us, um, on the elected side, we hope, we only have to do this a couple times in our career and we're going to enter into a relationship that's going to help shape the city moving forward. So for me, as the one interviewing, I'm excited. If you don't show up with some excitement, you're out. Sorry. I'm, I'm sorry. It's just, you're out. Like this is a big deal, right? So I think that, that, you know, get excited, get amped. I don't care if you gotta drink 10 cups of coffee, drink a Red Bull.
Yeah.
But show some excitement with creativity, knowing the city and that you want to be there, that you want to be part of the process.
Yeah. Would you rather have a manager who is gonna be cautious and, 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 and protect the organization from anything that might be controversial, right? Or would you have, rather have a manager who is willing to take more risks, understanding that that might mean, uh, some controversy is going to come along with that, right?
That's a great question. It's twofold, right? Because if I have a strong city attorney, I'm not worried about the legality as much.
Mm-hmm.
There's that checks and balances that we need, right? Um, I, I, and this is just me because I'm a private sector guy, um, owning businesses. I, I want to push the envelope as much as we possibly can because that's when you start doing things that others are not and being creative, right? Um, so for me, i- it's, it's really someone who's willing to push the envelope. It's going to set aside others. I think, you know, we all, for us electeds out there and, and those that, that are in city government know about the League of Cities. And the League of Cities is so important, helped us during COVID with letters and, um, I don't agree with them on a lot of things when it comes to certain politic issues, but what they have done is created a safe place where city, uh, council members and city managers can come together and share ideas.
Yes.
I want to be able to share ideas. I don't want to go to the League of Cities and say, how's your year looking? Oh, mine's great. We're starting a police department. What? You're starting a police? Yeah, let me tell you, did, 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 right?
Yeah.
So that's what, for me personally, I want to be able to go onto a regional board or